Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the Board of Directors' regular meeting for July of the Duchess County IDA to order. And Jasmine, would you please take roll call?
Me.
Here.
Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Kathy Bauer.
Here.
Amy Bandadiri.
Here.
Jimmy Piccone.
Here.
Don Sagliano.
Here.
Al Torjoni.
Okay, first thing is to just remind everybody of our conflict of interest disclosure policy. And if anybody has a conflict with anything that's on the agenda, I would appreciate if they would tell me that now. Okay, I don't hear any, but if at any time during the meeting you discover that you have one, please let us know and state what your conflict is and we'll excuse you from that part of the meeting. Sarah, the proof of meeting was posted?
Yes.
Okay, is there any bills in communications?
No bills in communications.
All right, approval of minutes. We have minutes from the June 8th meeting here. And so, does anybody have any corrections or modifications to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, would someone be willing to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second that, Mark Doyle.
Okay, we have Kathy and Mark, thank you. Jasmine, could you take a vote to approve the minutes?
Don Sagliano.
In favor.
Approved.
Amy Bandadiri.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved.
Me.
Approved, okay. Report to the Treasurer.
Looking at the balance sheet, we have 6 million in cash. The reason why the high cash is we received in on 6/30 the Cricket Valley pilot of 3.4 million, 3.5 million. So as you can see down in accounts payable down below in the liabilities and equity section, there's a liability to pay out that 3.5. Looking at the P and L, we have cash revenues, total income of 5.1 million, carving out the pilot payments, it's 190,000. Expenses are 5.5 million, again carving out the same pilot payment is 585,000 for a net loss of 395,000 to a budgeted net loss of 259,000. Expenses are on schedule there, nothing seems to be going over, so no concern expense-wise.
And I also would assume that our, you know, being a little bit above or behind our budget at this point in the year, we're still okay?
Right, it's just, the expenses are fine, it's going to be the revenue to say what comes in.
Okay.
So, yes. So, the budget for the first fifth month was 375,000 in administrative fees, and we've only achieved 171,000. Is there an explanation or any commentary as to why we're so far under?
So it's, well, we're under, but it's, the 375 represents the entire year and not the first six months.
Oh, that's the whole 12 months?
Yeah, the whole 12 months.
Okay.
But we are under because our administrative fees are based on the projects that come to the agency and so, or close with the agency, and because it's based on the projects that the, basically apply for IDA benefits. So right now, due to the size of the projects that, that have come to the agency and closed, which includes Arthur May and One Duchess Phase 3, that's why we're below our projections, but...
And there's no application fees for the first six months?
So we did receive an application fee from One Duchess, but didn't, have we received the application fee from One Duchess Phase 3?
If anything, there was an application fee that came in in July that went in for a thousand dollars, but that might have been for the Hudson Valley Logistics.
Oh, okay, so we'll have...
I'll take a look and see.
But the closing for, for the application fee for Arthur May was back in 2018.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, and we do not need to approve the Treasurer's report. It's a report of committees, is there anything that we need to talk about there?
No.
Okay, is there any unfinished business?
No.
Okay, all right, so the first thing for new business consideration, and I guess I should mention, I'm going to mention now, just so people are aware, Item B, 9B, for consideration and approval for the Champlain Hudson Power Express. The applicant has requested that we withdraw that for this meeting's agenda, so if there's anybody that's on, on the line here that was on the line for that purpose, I will know that that has been withdrawn and will be discussed perhaps at a future meeting, but for right now, it's been tabled. So getting back to 9A, Canham Hudson Valley Logistics, Sarah, do you want to kick that off for us?
Sure, so Canham Hudson Valley Logistics owner is comprised of the members behind the USAF Logistics Center, which is going to house the Amazon warehouse. This project is located, in fact, in front of the Amazon warehouse at the site of what is most commonly known as the Sports Dome. Hudson Valley Logistics has recently purchased the property and they plan to construct a 530,000 square foot warehouse and logistics center, but they do, they are requesting IDA financial assistance in order to make the property competitive and to trap the potential end user. They are requesting a sales tax exemption, a mortgage tax exemption, and the same 15 meter deviated pilot that was approved for the Amazon warehouse. At this time, because they do not have a tenant identified, they are estimating or guaranteeing a projected FTE...
I just want to make sure I clarify that, you said you're, they're estimating or guaranteeing?
I'm sorry.
Please.
They are guaranteeing 100 FTEs to be created at the job site.
Okay.
But they, but they have stated as well in their application that it could be up to 500 depending on the end user, but we are using the 100 FTE as the guarantee.
Just a quick question, Sarah, and maybe this will be discussed during the presentation, but they're requesting the same benefits as was offered to the other project. Can you refresh our memory on how many jobs that project created?
So the Amazon warehouse project is stated to create 500 FTEs.
And is that what their, their pilot is based on with a clawback?
There, yes, their clawback trigger is 500 FTEs.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to introduce, we have this morning, we have John DiCola.
I'm sorry, Don Sagliano.
Yeah, Sarah, when was this application received?
This was received on, at the end of June.
It was dated June 23rd, is that when it was received because, and was there a application fee attached to the application packet when it was received?
So, yes, I believe that's the one... It came in July, we just, they, they sent by mail and it came, so they sent their, their application electronically, but they mailed their check.
So the application check has been received?
Has been received, yes.
But in July, so it wasn't part of the financial report for...
And is this entity common ownership with the previous project?
Um...
Under the Internal Revenue Code, Section 351, or rules of attribution for affiliated entities?
John, we can't hear you.
We still can't hear you for some reason. Your mute is turned off, but we can't hear you, is the volume here, could the, is it our volume?
Because we can hear Mark, we can hear Mark.
Check with Mark again, or Nick.
Can't hear you. Your mute is back on, on our screen.
Okay, now, let's, I'll ask.
Bear with us one second. Just to check other people, Ryan, could you talk, and we want to see if we can hear you?
Morning, everyone.
Yep, we can hear Ryan, and Nicholas.
He's on mute.
He's on mute.
You're on mute.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I actually have no idea what happened.
That's okay.
So, good morning, yes, my name's John DiCola, I'm a partner with Blue Water Property Group. And just to answer the question, we, this is not the same entity that owns the Amazon building, but it is the same, the same partners, if you will. It's a different investment vehicle that is a partner from USAA than the one that has done the Amazon building, so they're completely separate from an economic standpoint, from, but from a capabilities and execution, you know, this is, can be seen as a related team in terms of the qualifications and effort being put forth, but the actual ownership and the financial interests are from different investment vehicles.
Thank you.
So on the application, that was not denoted because it said that there was no previous public assistance?
Right, so they, from, again, they're, they're very distinct from a balance sheet standpoint.
Excuse me, sir, are they related entities under Section 351 of the Internal Revenue Code? Do they share common ownership? That's the question.
The answer is no.
Okay. So there's no common ownership?
Correct.
Correct.
As I understand it, as, what he's trying to say is that the people behind the oversight of the projects, construction and things like that are similar people, but the ownership, the financial ownership is different, is that correct?
That's correct, there's no, there's no economic sharing of, of anything.
Okay. Any other questions before we get started? Okay, Sarah, you, how do you want to proceed here?
So, I, so on the, joining us, we have John DiCola, Ryan Kelly, Supervisor Del Sandro, and Tom Wood from the town of East Fishkill to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, all right, so is there any, do we want the, do we want John to do, make any comments before that?
Yeah, if he's, if he would like, he can make any comments, again, this is a, this is a preliminary resolution that the board is considering, so this is an opportunity to...
Okay, so, John, did you want to make any opening comments? Or did you want to...
Well, if it was helpful for the board, I could re-familiarize everybody with the, with the property, I mean, this is, just to remind everyone, this is the, would complete the redevelopment of the former IBM West Campus in East Fishkill, which was a 157-acre portion of, of the larger IBM campus that had been lying fallow for over two decades. And, you know, this, this, the, I guess the, can call it the first portion of it that was developed for the Amazon project was done, it's still, it's, the construction is being completed, we hope to have everything finished and have Amazon operational in there shortly for that project. The balance of the property, which is the old Sports Dome facility, is one for which, you know, there was an attempt to redevelop that, that was stalled some years ago and it has been sitting in an incomplete state since then. This will complete the redevelopment of that portion of the property, and I can give just a quick overview of what the park will look like once it's finished and what we're, we're proposing to do if you'd like.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay, so Ryan, why don't you pull up the, the aerial that shows the context of the property? So one, one of the advantages, the clear advantages for the site is its, is its location, which is close to the interchange between Long Kiln Road and I-84. This was, you know, the front door, if you will, for the, for the IBM campus back when it was fully operational. What we're able to do here, which, which we feel really good about, is to take a site that has already been developed and take advantage of, of things that have been accomplished in the past, but then turn around now and re-energize things that have been sitting fallow. So the overall goal has been to take advantage of the, of the infrastructure that, that does exist there in terms of traffic capacity, in terms of utilities that, that exist, and so that you don't, we're not taxing or creating new burdens within the, the local area greater than what was there before, in fact, it's less. But we're able, what we are able to do is, is also further through redevelopment of this site is, is even further diminish the impact. So one of the key attributes of the project is that we have developed and have created this new, what's shown here in blue, is a new park drive that connects this property directly to the interchange. So as we have this, what is a new thread of, of economic development is, you know, within the logistics sector, we're, we're completely keeping all trucks that'll be making deliveries to and from this facility off of local roads. And if, if you're familiar with this, Route 52 is a, is a commercial corridor for local businesses and for the community. This project is, is going to be, have the, the presence of being a corporate neighbor, but we're looking to very much minimize the burden. So all of the truck traffic will be just utilizing that main drive to go to and from the interchange.
Is that Line Kiln?
Well, that's, that is Line Kiln Road, correct.
Okay.
It's now, I think the interchange is called I Park, also called I Park Drive, and then you come in with, into what is, as we're doing this, working with, with the town, we are creating this road and will become very shortly a public road that will help enhance the local traffic improvements that the town is, is instituting within this corridor and fits nicely hand in glove in, in that effort. The other good act, aspects of it, again, because it was already developed, what we are developing is, is a site that's already been cleared, so there are no impacts to natural resources or habitats, we're not clearing any, any treat areas, so it's really just redeveloping that which has formerly been developed. The project itself, Ryan, if you could pull up the site plan, is a, a modern logistics facility of 530,000 square feet. Our goal is, is to take advantage of, of the location with, of Duchess County now within the region of the Northeast where there is, Amazon's a good example of this, where there's, there's a lot more interest in, in getting the inventory that all of us purchase and consume in our daily lives to get that closer to the consumer. Back in the past, when it was all about store fulfillment, a lot of the product could exist outside of the region and all of that development and jobs existed outside of the region, now there's, there is a, a new demand to actually locate these facilities, and this is why you're starting to see this type of, of, of development. So what we're hopeful that we're going to do here is be able to attract perhaps a single user, but maybe multiple users, so it's being developed on a speculative basis, so we don't have any tenants yet, but it, and it's been designed so that it can accommodate and be a, a good, a single tenant building for one user, but also has the flexibility and has been designed with functional aspects, so it can be subdivided, therefore, you know, what we're not looking to do is build a building that stays vacant, looking to build a building that, that actually can get leased and bring the jobs and the, and the economic activity associated with it. So that's, the frontage of the, of the property is, it's being developed with a great sensitivity to sightlines and adjacent uses, and again, the impacts from stormwater and everything else is being done so that there is zero net impact to the environment that's around it. So we feel really good about what we have for a development project. In terms of attracting the tenants, the one, you know, one big disadvantage that you have in the Northeast as these tenants look to come in and they, they are very sensitive to overall operating costs, is it's so much more expensive to operate a building in the Northeast. But because the, the underlying shifts in, in the sector, there are more tenants that are doing it. On a micro level, the, you know, relative to where most of this is happening, you're starting to see it really increasingly in the Hudson Valley area. Most of that activity, though, has been in Orange County, where you have other opportunities, more opportunities like this to develop, where the land, you know, on this side of the river is, there's a lot of topography, there are a lot of wetlands, so finding a site like this is challenging. But also, the economics on the west side of, of the Hudson River also have a big advantage in that, you know, operating costs are less, real estate taxes in particular are a lot less. So what we're trying to do is to create a great operational building here for somebody to operate out of, through the functionality of the physical building, but what we're also looking to do through the pilot is level the playing field so that tenants who are looking up along the Hudson Valley and might consider this building aren't going to be disadvantaged in their decision because the real estate taxes are so much higher here than what they are in other competing areas that they're, that they're looking at.
Could you, before you move on, could you elaborate in a little bit more detail for us on what that competitive disadvantage is in regards to real estate taxes? Could you give us some examples of that?
Yeah, so this, the main, the main pockets where users like this are looking are going to be really, there are really three. There's along the I-87 and I-84 corridors over in, in Orange County, and there you're going to have real estate taxes that are about a dollar fifty per square foot to less than a dollar per square foot. The other big area that is still within locationally, transportation costs of competitive areas, Northeast Pennsylvania, which is, you know, and it has a lot of these, these type of developments, and real estate taxes are around, you know, 50 cents to say 75 cents per square foot. On an unabated basis here, you're, you're upwards of $3 per square foot. The other market that is Connecticut, up in the Hartford area, that is less as a, as a competitive area because it's a little further away, but that also is a place where go, operating expenses are, are a lot less there. So what we're, we're trying to do is not to gain an advantage versus these other areas, it's really to be not disadvantaged, to basically level the playing field, and, and in doing so, we're not looking to change the overall approach that has been done for adjoining properties within this exact market. So you've had the Amazon that's, that has that program, looking at Frito-Lay also, and those have been very instrumental in attracting those two users to, to this location. We, I will tell you, we don't, we don't have a, a tenant, but we are out there talking to tenants, and we're, we're happy to say that we have been added to the shortlist of one prospective tenant right now, the only project that is not either in Orange County or in Connecticut. And one of the reasons is, they're, they're of the belief that we're having discussions where there will not be a disadvantage associated with this building, that's our hope, we have made no promises, but I just wanted to point that out in that it's a real-time example of where this property was evaluated among a lot of different properties, and it was included on the shortlist because it's hopeful that the ingredients will be there so that it can be as competitive with their other options.
Before you move on, I'm sorry, one other question. Can you talk about how the equation has changed since we approved these other projects with the, and I don't know, we can't say it's a permanent change, but at least temporarily, the cost of fuel for trucking has surged, so being closer to your end consumer has become an advantage in that case in comparison to if you have to bring things from, as you met, mentioned, these other corridors of Pennsylvania or Orange County, fuel does become an issue for them, doesn't it?
Yeah, but it's, it's interesting, you know, different tenants, you know, they, how they look at it, how they emphasize their, what they call their inbound versus outbound, it, it really is interesting. We, I'll use again this one prospective user as an example, we've, we've been trying to figure out, is there a competitive advantage that this specific location has, and this, this company is looking, it's got two options in Hartford, around the Hartford area, and two in, in Orange County, and, and relative to Orange County, this is pretty much on par. Relative to Connecticut, though, the transportation actually comes out almost equal, because here there's an advantage on the inbound side, but there there's an advantage on the outbound side. On net, it's almost, it almost comes out even for that particular tenant.
Got it.
But it is, it's interesting, it's a great question, but it also, it, it can vary very greatly for, for different users, because some, you know, a lot of product may be coming, depends where the product comes from. If it's coming from overseas and landing in the port, there's much more of a, of a, an emphasis on being close to the port, for which this, this actually has a disadvantage to, you know, portions of, of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. But if it's coming across the country, it's less of a, less of a disadvantage. So it really depends upon where that tenant is originating with its goods and where, where the ultimate destination is.
Thank you. I hope I didn't interrupt your train of thought on, on how you were presenting to us. Did you have further comments that you wanted to make?
No, I think that's, that's generally it, I was, I was happy to answer additional questions.
I've got a couple more, but I don't want to hog the stage. Does anybody else have some questions they would like to ask? All right, while you're thinking, two questions. You mentioned that you wanted to limit the impact in Route 52 is the, is the local road that's involved here, and you said that, you know, people will use the, the I Park exit, but is there going to be any physical barriers to keep people from, I mean, there will be an entrance on 52, correct?
Yes, and it'll be, it'll be limited to just cars.
Oh, it will be, okay.
Yeah, and we've, and we've done, we've done a traffic analysis already to show what those impacts are, you know, relative to where employees are becoming, because obviously, you know, one of the benefits of this is it'll be, these will be jobs for the local surrounding area, so there will be people coming from different directions and will be utilizing Route 52, but we've done that analysis and are, the level of service that results from it is all very favorable. We're also are participating within a, a transportation improvement district where we'd be making a contribution to local road improvements that have, are being, that are nearly underway by, by the town. And, you know, we've, we've known that that would be the case with our previous development, and, and we're happy to, to contribute in that fashion. So we feel really good about how this will be a net positive for the overall road infrastructure.
All right, next question from me. A positive of this, this application is certainly that we have a ugly, and I'm sure Supervisor Del Sandro will, will confirm this, but we have an ugly slab there right now for a project which is no longer going to happen. So that's a positive, and I, I wanted to ask you to comment for us, and are you going to be utilizing that slab? And if not, I would assume not, but what... what the additional cost would be to you to get this to a ready condition for the ultimate building? But then the other follow up to that, while that's a positive, the negative that I see on this in comparison to the Amazon building is that you're only committing a hundred jobs versus the Amazon is five hundred. And so, you know, that's obviously a significant, significantly lower job commitment. And I wanted to ask you if you think that you would be willing to give us a higher job commitment of some kind as part of the the pilot that we were to give to you. So two questions, the cost of the demo and the jobs part.
Well, I guess I'll, the demo, let me say the demo is easy, easier, because it's more, more straightforward. What is there are, in essence, perimeter foundations for to support the portion of the hard wall that went up, some concrete panels that are standing not that tall, because if you, there was gonna be a soft membrane that was gonna be really the the majority of of the physical mass, if you will. And so we are going to demo that and use what we can by crushing that material and and using it where we can onsite. So recycling what's there. So is that?
The slab, the slab itself, are you gonna be able to utilize that or do you have to?
No, and it really is, they didn't, they didn't pour that much of nothing that's extensive there.
Okay.
So it'll take some work from us, but it's, 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 we've, we have factored that in.
Okay.
And then as it relates to the job, I guess I'll just respond to say, you know, that we don't, again, we have no idea yet who the tenant will be for this. What we don't want to do is, you know, the, the Amazon was a very big anomaly, or they are, they are an anomaly out there in terms of, or unique, I should say, and and what they do. And, you know, I think when we, you know, we're very careful with, even with the Amazon project, I think we're, we're careful not to try to draw too many parallels from them to what other people do and other, other companies do. I guess I'll answer the, can I answer the question, say, we, we're, we're trying to hit what we think is a very reasonable employment number for the size of this building within the context of the industry. And is a, and and the level of investment, you know, and if you look just also what you did approve as a, as a pilot for Frito-Lay, also right next door to this on the IBM East Campus. And for that, it's, it's generally a, a project that's of similar size and similar investment, but also around the same employment count that we're talking about here. And that's probably more indicative of what you would see within the industry as opposed to the anomaly or the exception being Amazon.
Okay, Supervisor Del Sandro, would you care to comment to us about where you stand in East Fishkill and and comment to us about your satisfaction with the, you know, comparing this to the other projects where benefits have been granted, are you satisfied with the number of jobs that will be created and the and the construction values that will be created by this project in comparison to those other two? You're unmute.
You lost his picture.
You're still, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Hold on one sec. I think he's saying it's on our side.
It's on our side.
Give us one second, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Now we can hear you.
There we go.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Sorry about my appearance, I'm on vacation.
Good for you.
The, the, the Town of East Fishkill is very supportive of the project. As it was mentioned earlier, this is the former IBM West complex, and this would be the final piece to be completed there. And as it was mentioned before, the former dome, Sports Dome, to be completed, obviously, that hasn't come to fruition the last several years. And by no fault of the towns, I gotta tell you, we have let them have a lot of rope and tried to finish that project, but they just didn't have the means to do it. But in saying that, Blue Water has been a very good partner with the town, with their former project that they completed, Amazon. And now we're hopeful that this new project will move forward. The jobs, yeah, of course, more jobs, the better, right? But if there is a hundred jobs is better than zero jobs. And the Town of East Fishkill has been very forward on our economic policies and plans, trying to lure different companies to come here. We did a full industrial study throughout the town and identified, obviously, the east and west campus as one of the main industrial areas to be developed because of infrastructure, water, sewer. And we're in the process of doing a large traffic mitigation plan, which Blue Water did participate with the Amazon project and will continue with this new project, which is a four million dollar traffic mitigation plan, including a new road which will be Patriot Way, which will connect 52 to Limekill Road right by 84, and a, a traffic circle at that intersection and also a school drop off zone for the school. So we're very excited to have this. It's a blighted area right now with those walls up and any improvement will, it will be very welcome. So we are currently working with our partners, the school district, on discussions about the tax pilot, and they are very welcome as well to have that site cleaned up, to have a, a better taxpayer there. So any other questions or for me?
I'm gonna ask when and again. If anybody else has questions, please, I don't mean to try and dominate this. So, good thing is it's your last uncompleted parcel. Bad thing is it's your last uncompleted parcel.
Campus still to be.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you. Do you still have room? So, and I, obviously, even in better use, if it was competitively possible, would be to be an industrial business with tons of jobs. And we know those are hard to find. But will you still have room for those types of tenants should one come up in that area?
We absolutely do. The east campus is not fully built out yet. I believe that there'll be another application soon for another logistics center on the east campus to be presented to you guys. And also, On Semiconductor will be over Foundry Semiconductor at the end of 23. And with that, they are looking to expand their, their footprint there. There is a clean room in another area for more chip manufacturing, which they are in the process of negotiating with I-Park. I'm very hopeful that that will go through because that will be very, very good paying jobs. And, and to expand their, their, their footprint there so they could continue to be a long term tenant at the east campus. But now, there are several other projects possibly going on the east campus. I don't know if you've heard, Lions Gate Studios is looking to build a backlot studios plus a thirty thousand square door filming studio on the east campus. And they are looking at another 1.1 million square foot logistics center as well on a vacant piece of property. So there are plenty of properties left for development.
Okay, I've got another question. I noted in the drawing set, there is this new road Patriots Way. And I noticed that there's a vacant parcel between that road and Route 84. And I was just curious to, do you know who owns that? Is it, is it a viable parcel for future development or is it wetlands? What do you know about that?
Yes, that's the parcel that they're looking to do the plus square foot center. There is a little wetlands right in the middle of that parcel, which we are looking to do wetland mitigation plan. The town is a participant right now at I-Park. We've been to the.
Unfortunately, we've lost you for, we lost your voice there. Give us a test. We still can't hear you. Oh, now I can. We lost you. Okay, try again.
Yeah, you got me.
Yes, yes. So you, we lost you when you said that you were partnering with I-Park on a wetlands mitigation plan?
Yes, we've been to DEC several times. There's a little part of spot in that parcel. It's a parcel that they were looking for a million plus square feet. And it's looking very favorable.
Okay, all right, I've exhausted my questions. Anybody else?
Mark Doyle.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. So my question is also on the subject of of employment. And I certainly appreciate the developers' appetite for taking risk. This is not an, not an easy slam dunk at all. I'm interested in sort of the comparison to the Frito-Lay project in that, yes, there were certainly fewer jobs, but they were projected at least as high paying jobs. And in order to accomplish that, the, well, Frito-Lay, I guess, as the developers themselves were installing or designing a building that was, that required more automation and installing the facilities, the automated facilities that would then require fewer human operators, thus being able, allowing them to pay higher, higher salaries. So I'm wondering on the developing front, understanding that it's speculative, what are the developers doing in this regard? Because on the other side of the equation, you know, we've done our county housing needs assessment and there is a, a housing crunch, a very severe housing crunch at the lower end. So it seems that an impact that has not been discussed is the the potential for the county taxpayers to have to subsidize, you know, lower income earners being attracted to these, these jobs in forms, in the form of housing subsidies. So I'd like a bit of discussion on that subject.
Well, I, for me to answer, I know that the county executives, one of his big initiatives now is for workforce housing throughout the county, that they said they were somewhere of twenty-five hundred units deficient. We do have a workforce housing project in East Fishkill, eighty-eight units, that that could potential house some of these workers, but I know the county executives' plans are to expand already on the workforce housing.
John, could you comment on the, on the, 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 well, again, it's speculative, but it sounds to me like these are going to be more of, you know, warehousing jobs, you know, at a minimum, you can't really, I, I'm suspecting you can't comment much more than that, but as Mark points out, the comparison with the Frito-Lay, the, the values of the the investment in the, the interior contents of that building were higher due to the automation and robotics that they were put in. So in effect, you know, some of the taxes on that bill, again, and I don't know, I, we, I can't recall, but the taxes may be higher on that building. But anyways, jobs wise, any comments?
Yeah, no, and I, I think that's, it's, it is interesting. I think most, if you go back to past trend lines, you know, the notion of more automation, people think means less jobs. Within the logistics sector, the advanced and more automation actually is bringing more jobs and it, and ultimately, on average, higher paying jobs because with that automation comes a big step up in, in technology and needing to maintain that technology and invest that technology. See, you have to have a lot of technicians on hand, people who are, have a higher level of education and get a higher level of pay. You know, this is something that, again, we, we probably aren't as close to the real time data because these aren't our employees, they're the employees of our, of our tenants. But we are seeing those trend lines where you know, average pay is going up at a much higher rate for these type of facilities than they are within other sectors. And, you know, we, some of the data that we've gotten recently, you know, it's, these aren't your entry level, low paying jobs like they were back twenty years ago when somebody was just driving around on a forklift. There's just so much more that's happening within these facilities that takes a lot more in, in terms of logistics management. And, you know, the logistics field, nobody calls it warehousing anymore, they call it logistics because, you know, universities now have degrees in this that where it's a specific focus and seen as a higher trajectory career path. So we, we are definitely seeing that where with more investment within the buildings, yes, you do get, you know, that, that investment, not just in terms of dollars, but what they're investing in is of a higher order nature and the, the level of, of operation is high order that requires much more advanced personnel to, to manage it. I don't have anything, you know, again, I, because we don't, we don't know specifically who ultimately will occupy. I will say, for the one prospect that we do have, automation is, is a component of it for them. And it's, and it is along that same trend line of trying to be able to do more within the building rather than less.
Okay, any other questions? Mark, was that an answer satisfactory to you?
Thank you. I think that it's obviously difficult to project this where one's providing a, you know, a space on a speculative basis. But, but I do think that looking into the future and designing into that facility, the ability to to wire it up and, you know, build out a facility that is actually on the, is on the side of automation is really important.
I, I guess, you know, for me, what you're looking for is certainty in your cost structure, but at the same time, we're not, we're not getting, I guess the question is, is the minimum number of jobs being committed to us enough to justify, you know, with the hope of some upward, you know, numbers in those, is that minimum that's being projected enough to justify granting them a similar, you know, abatement to what we've done in other projects? And as has been pointed out, one had five hundred jobs, but the other one we approved did only have a hundred, I think, or eighty. So, you know, so any other questions? Don Saglana.
So in looking at the application page thirteen, it identifies the project location and it refers to a primary parcel with the lot number five eight seven one zero five. And when that is compared to the seeker document, it's a different lot number. The lot number listed in the secret document is five nine seven one zero five.
Let me double check that.
So I would say that, just to resolve that question, I would think if we put forth any preliminary resolution today, it would be subject to the, obviously, the, the plot identified on this application would be the same as the secret document. In other words, you know, be properly matched. I'm assuming that's what you would want. I'm, I'm hoping that this is a clerical error in that. But, okay. Ryan, did you want to comment on that at all? Ryan, did you want to comment on that at all other than that you're going to check?
Yep, I'm, I'm checking right now.
Okay, I mean, is it a safe assumption to say that the SECRE has been approved for this parcel?
Well, yeah, go ahead. Excuse me. And then if you look at actual the SECRE form, page two of 13, it states that the SECRE application with the East Fishkill Town Board is slated for July 25th, which is later this month, as well as the site plan approval and subdivision.
Yes, that's correct.
And this is a, this is ours, this application is a preliminary.
This is a preliminary and, oh.
Preliminary, final, the, the documents are not fully complete. I'm sorry, I'm entitled to my, no, no, no.
We're not, we're not.
I have more stuff here.
No, so, but before you move on, I want to make sure that we address that. It's important. So it's, then what, what you're saying in this application is that you anticipate that you will receive future approvals before we do any final, is that correct?
That's correct.
If we were to, if we were to approve this preliminarily, which is not determined yet, that these meetings and these approvals would occur.
Yes, that's correct. I think we're, we're approaching this similar to how we approached the other project, which is where, you know, what we're trying to do is, is most efficient fashion is get to overall approvals and some things can happen, need to happen sequentially, some can happen currently. And we're, so this preliminary approval, in our mind, is saying, we're setting the stage for you, this is what we are going to do. We're only going to come back and ask for your final approval once we have done those things.
Okay, that's, that's fine. All right, so Don, is that right now?
I, I don't believe it's satisfactory to have a lead application.
All right, so just, I want to be clear. So are you, before we-
It doesn't matter what I have to say because they've responded.
Right.
And I'll move on to the next question.
Well, don't mind, I'd like to ask you a question because I think it's important.
Yeah.
Conceptually for our committee, do you want a preliminary application to come before us that has future approvals that would need to occur before a final? Or do you think that we should not have even a preliminary without those things having date in?
In my previous professional experience, external to being a legislator or a member of this board, we, the organization that I worked, worked with and worked for, we could not even go in front of the local development agency unless it was complete, unless it had site plan approval notwithstanding. So that's a, a bit of the tact, the fact that we didn't have, if this was here on June 23rd, the check should have been here that day. If the, if the controller says it's now in and it's in hand, it's after the fact, but this was dated June 23rd. I feel it should have been here at the same time. In addition to that, I have an additional question as to the application from just scrolling through and getting to the point where on page, back to page two of 13, when it speaks on the government approvals, it says that the economic redevelopment special permit has already been granted to the applicant. Is that in fact true? Repeat that. It's listed in the SECRE document that the economic redevelopment special permit has been issued because it's listed as June 22nd.
Yeah, the town board's lead agency and I, just to give you an update, I stay on top of, of my engineering staff on SECRE review. The town board is on, going to place on their next agenda to issue a NECDAC for the, for this project.
Okay, but does that, has the special current redevelop, economic redevelopment special permit been issued?
That, that go, that, yes, we did that, we initiated that last time when we utilized lead agency.
Okay.
And if I could follow up on the, the parcel number questions, the application is correct and there, there was an, an error in, on one portion of the EAF document. I'll double-check whether or not that has since been rectified, but thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. And my final question regarding the application, I'm just trying to find the location, the federal tax ID was not listed in the application from the entity. I don't know exactly what that would be, sorry.
It was maybe in the beginning, on page, page seven.
Page seven. Yeah, so on page seven, it doesn't list the, no, that's not where it's-
It's there. It's on the top right and-
No, there was another section where it wasn't listed.
Maybe that was in the SECRE?
Very well, but, sorry. Okay. If that's, if that's the case and that is the accurate tax ID, then it should be populated on page 10 of the document where it says, will a real estate holding company be utilized? Yes. What is the name of the real estate holding company? See above, I guess that's the name of the applicant. And then there's no federal ID number, there's no state or year of incorporation, and there's no list of stockholders, members, or partners of the applicant. That's section E on page ten.
Fair point. Thanks, thank you for pointing that out. I can confirm that on the application, the FEI number, FEI number is correct, but I'll be, be sure to, to ensure that that's reflected as well and has been rectified on the EAF document.
All right, I do want to follow up on a couple of your questions because I think it is important to us as a board that we have some consensus on a couple of these items. The first question that I have is for counsel, and that is, are we allowed under law to consider in a preliminary stage an application which has board meetings and approvals that must occur prior to final approval?
Yes. And, and in fact, we include right in our resolution that the approval is sub, or right in the preliminary resolution, that's subject to those other approvals and you're not going to be able to grant final approval until those issues are decided on.
So then the, the follow-up to that is, one of our board members has expressed concern about some of those types of issues in an application. And so what I would like to hear from other board members, and, and I posed a question and, Don, I'm not sure if you answered it or not, but I, the question I posed is, do we want to, for the future, not allow applicants to come to us for preliminary approval who have some of these listed items with future dates?
No, there was, my question was, is that it said that it was completed, so, in looking at, you know, when, when we get a SECRE evaluation and we're looking at it, it's assumed that it's already been promulgated and reviewed by the local lead agency and adopted. However, it, it, in the, in the form, it says it hasn't been.
Well, again, I just want to make sure I understand where we're looking because under the, two of 13, under the SECRE, it says, application date, actual or projected. It doesn't say just actual. Is there another spot that you're-
Well, I assume that that would be the actual.
Well, it says actual or projected.
Well, I, I would be assuming that it's the actual since the one already happened.
Right.
So you can't project backwards.
No, that would, that would-
So the learned assumption is, is that these are the actual and also knowing that they referred to July 25th-
Yeah.
-in another area in the application, I'm also assuming that that's the next scheduled town board meeting.
Right, so my question is, do you have, do you not want us to consider an applicant for preliminary approval if they have a date in the future for, for-
No, I, as long as it's, it's in protocol with the adoption, I'm just, I'm just drawing it out, fleshing it out because it was, I was unsure in trying to discern how far along this project is.
Okay.
Now, the, the other thing I'd like to speak to, and I don't know if Sarah or Counsel Capellino knows.
Can we, I just, I'm sorry, I just want to hold here for a second. I just want to make sure I have clarity because you, you mentioned that in another board that you worked on.
It's another, it's another, it's another-
You would not have let something like this hap-
All means go in the corollary.
Right.
Far policy procedure is slightly different.
Okay.
And, and that's fine.
Okay, so, all right, so I, so-
May I say something?
Yes.
So, you know, I think in support of Don, the, the issue is perhaps that, you know, are the application text reflects a rather simplified version of what's, of the actuality. So I think that it's actually incumbent on the applicant to make sure that when the board sits down, they're looking at the facts as they currently, as they currently exist. So it's, you know, a question like this doesn't become a hitching point and, you know, that's, that's what I think. I think that we need to make it very clear to applicants that when they come to a meeting that there, yes, there are subsequent actions that are going to be required before finalization, but that this is where we actually stand today.
That's what I, okay, thank you. That's what I'm trying to understand is, for the future, what this committee wants to see. That's, that, I, I hope, Don, I, this is, I'm not trying to grill you, that's what I really want to get out of this, is I want Sarah to understand, for the future, what needs to be different when we have a situation like this?
And so, I mean, there's a, a longstanding issue is that we were only dropped these documents on Friday of last week.
Correct.
Okay, the longstanding issue is if we should have had at least a, a full week to review them. I mean, because there's a lot of stuff in here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, my next question, I don't know, Counsel, Counsel, so I'm noticing that the pilot schedules, a 15-year pilot, is that our normal pilot or activities in this regard?
So this is a deviated pilot. This is the same pilot that was requested and approved for the Amazon warehouse project as well as the Pepsi, Frito-Lay. So they are asking for a similar pilot as those two prior projects.
So when, when I'm reviewing this, it, it mentions in section two of the market assessed values that the total assessed value would be $47,100, well, yeah, $47,100,000. Is that fully built out? Is that upon the 30, of year 15? Because it refers to the project as being a $79 million project.
Yeah, so that is, and you can also respond to that, but that is the, the value that will be, the building will be assessed at once it is fully complete. It is common for buildings to, or projects and buildings to be assessed differently from the total construction cost.
Wait, back up. When you say fully complete, that is fully complete when they're done with it or fully complete when their tenant moves in?
So when a certificate of occupancy is completed, is filed.
Well, I, I believe that that amount does not include the, the land, but I, I don't have the documents in front of me to look, I'm sorry.
No, it says the land assessed value is $10 million. However, on page 17 of the application, it speaks to the land, the acquisition cost of land and/or existing structures, which the applicant has basically said that they're going to, you know, repurpose, that has $22 million, and it says new construction, $56 million. So back on attachment four to the pilot schedule summary, it says land assessed value of $10 million, improvements assessed value at 100%, $37,100,000, total assessed value is $47,100,000, which includes the assessed valuation of the land. And is this a future as-built estimate of what the assessment is?
I, from my understanding, the, we generated an assessed value based upon the Amazon and the Frito-Lay estimate well because we wanted to stay within that footprint of the, the per square foot, tax dollar per square foot. All future assessments are to increase year over year, just, just as they would for Amazon and Frito-Lay.
Yeah, I, I, maybe I can, I can help with this because this is something that was done with the town assessor, where following their direction on how they assess buildings and properties within the context of both the, the overall environment and the specific use. And so this is consistent with how that's been handled. The, to answer the question, this is, this would be based on a, a full building with a generic tenant. So a generic tenant with, would be sort of that normal and customary tenant improvement. If all of a sudden this, a, a tenant came in and did something of, of a much higher nature with a different type of operation and, and such that the, the property were ultimately going to be assessed from a, differently, that would then, that would then get reflected and taken into account at that time.
So this, this valuation, if we agree to this, it would not go below that? It possibly could go higher or what, what are we saying here?
Yeah, just like Amazon and, and Frito-Lay, that was the, that was a base number we started with and any future increases would be additionally added on.
Okay. So no matter, I guess, at the point that this agreement is, if we were, if it's approved by everybody, my point is, is that that would be the assessed value for the pilot unless additional things occur to make it more valuable.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I, I really think that $70 a square foot is a very low value to assign to a building, but I'm not the assessor in the town of East Fishkill. So I also noticed that this pilot doesn't kick in or doesn't even begin until there's occupancy of 66% or more is achieved. And then the pilot will begin, I guess there's a pilot prior to occupancy. And since, since this is a building that's being built on speculation, you know, how long will that interim period be before we, you even are able to get to two-thirds of fit out? What, what's your estimate and assessment?
Yeah, I think hopefully it's immediate.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I can appreciate that, sure.
Yeah, and then, so the way, yeah, and this is something we worked out, you know, this is a collaboration approach of what, how is this being done? Because we don't, we don't obviously have a user, we're doing this, taking the risk to make this investment without having any revenue. And, and so what, how it's structured is, is so we can market the building, so we can market it to attract a user, to attract a tenant. You know, when we're finished with the building, if we're sitting there and we're vacant, you, you're not burning down and disadvantaging what you, you have in place to attract a, a tenant. So it's the earlier of 66% or two years. You have a period of lease up upwards of two years. If you don't achieve it, then it starts to, it starts to tick. But what we're trying to do is, is position the building so that when somebody comes in and they decide, yes, I want this to be our home, they have the benefits of the pilot as if when they were somebody coming into the market initially, not unlike Amazon, where we came to you and we had Amazon already identified.
And just, just to add to Legislature Sagliano's comments, yeah, our assessment review, when we decide to sit down to put, put an amount to this, we did look at the Amazon and Frito-Lay, which was both approved by your board, and we are, we try to be business-friendly. That's why, that's why half of our success is moving forward with all these projects. So, yeah, it might be a, potentially a little low, I guess it depends on who your assessor is, but I, is prove out- I guess it depends on who your assessor is, but I, is proved out very well for us. All these other projects are paying double the amount of taxes if they were a vacant site, so.
Mm-hmm. I understood, thank you Supervisor DelSandro.
Anything else? So I would like to, again, I just want to emphasize, and I want to thank our board member, Don Sagliano. We, all of us bring different experiences to this board, and we're very fortunate that one of the ones that we have is yours when it comes to, I think, working, you know, as an elected official in carefully reading applications and finding some of the errors, but also making sure that we very carefully answer that but for, you know, question before we approve something. So, you know, the combination, my questions back to you, were really to try and make sure I understood from a, almost a legal standpoint, what, what you were looking for in these applications. And, and then also, again, I appreciate your, your diligence on the other questions, so thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right, so we do have, there's a couple of things on the application itself that, you know, need to be built out. There is the point about the, Sarah, I'm hoping that you recall that.
So the, the, filling out the.
The owner's.
The ownership.
Yep.
Section.
Yep.
And then rectifying or clarifying the site, the.
Secra.
Secra, the, the plot.
Lot number, yeah.
And to confirm for the record, I can confirm everything on the application.
So the application is correct, the Secra is.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other part of the application needs to be filled out. And that, just to be clear, obviously, our preliminary approval, if it is voted on today and approved, it would still be subject to the approvals needed at the scheduled future meetings for, you know, applications. And we would need the written confirmation from the taxing jurisdictions, including the school district, that they are in favor of this.
Yes, so, so DelSandro appeared this morning to, you know, to show his support for the project. But again, the formal process is.
Yes.
A written proof, and, and the applicant can, and Hudson Valley Logistics will not appear again until, to, in front of the board until all those required documents are, have been met.
Is there anything else? Yes.
And I, I think there were, there also appears to have been a typo in the describe the tax lot number for one of the.
Okay.
On the, on the environmental.
Yeah.
I think a nine typed instead of an eight.
Yes.
I believe, I think that's what it was, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else that people would not want? And, you know, again, it's preliminary anyways, we have the right to ask further questions. But there is anything else, based on our discussion so far, that we would want to put into a preliminary resolution if one were to be put forth today? Okay, is anybody willing to make a, a motion to approve this preliminary resolution?
I'm willing to make that motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, is there someone willing to make a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, at this point, I would ask Jasmine to take the roll call vote.
In favor.
Amy, in favor.
In favor.
Amy, in favor.
In favor.
Abby, in favor.
In favor.
Mark Doyle.
In favor.
Indeed.
In favor. Okay, that preliminary resolution passes, and again, thank you for, everybody, for your input. You know, I think we all increasingly take, you know, these decisions very seriously in light of, you know, everything, you know, the, our obligations to our taxpayers and our stakeholders. So thank you very much for coming before us, and we will look forward to further development.
Then thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor DelSandro, enjoy the rest of your vacation.
He's already.
He's already.
Why?
Serious.
Okay.
I just have to step off. I've, I've been through the weeds and that's.
Okay, do we have a quorum without?
Uh, yes, yes, because we have.
No problem, oh, no, no problem. All right, so the next thing on our agenda is the Dutchess County Planning Housing Needs Assessment Report Presentation. And Mark and Amy, you do have, in your packet, there is a evaluation form that you'll need to get back to who else on that project.
Thank you.
Where did she want?
Did you get my PowerPoint?
Yes, we're putting it up right now.
Great.
Maybe you don't want to.
Well, because then I can't see what I'm doing.
Okay.
I can hold it on the corner.
Okay.
Swing around. I think we have enough chairs.
We have enough chairs.
Like, we're good. If I'm not like a stage manager. I'm gonna, I'm just owning what you're preaching about.
Yeah.
I'm gonna open this, like, you can say next slide, and then she knows to try. Oh, okay, can she, can she swap us with just the slide? I don't know. Yes, yes. There we go. It is, it just needs to back up to the.
Okay.
There we go. So I, what I need to do is, young men.
Yeah, just down that.
Maybe I just make a beep.
Just like the, the silent leaves of the older days.
I know, we tried to do it on my computer, but for some reason I'm getting back. So this was plan B, plan, so.
Okay, so maybe we could introduce, have some introductions?
So, yeah, so this morning, we have a presentation by the county planning department on the housing needs assessment report, which was released earlier this year. We have Owen Rafter, Commissioner of County Planning. We have Ann Sale, oh.
I'll introduce my.
Okay.
I know, I find it stressful introducing. I'm Ann Sale, Rept. Deputy Commissioner of her Housing at the Department of Planning.
And I'm Heather LeVar, I am a senior planner. So I'll just get things started, I'm gonna try to run through this pretty quickly because I know we're probably on a little bit of a time crunch. So as Sarah mentioned, the county released the Dutchess County Housing Needs Assessment a couple of months ago, and Mark Doyle was actually on our, our advisory committee, so he's got some familiarity with this. Next. So we hired a consulting firm, CZB, to help us sort of tackle three main tasks. And the first item was, they looked at our demographic housing and economic trends over the past ten to twenty years to help us understand how we got where we are right now with our housing situation. They projected out to 2040 to help us understand what we can anticipate for future housing needs, and then obviously helped us develop some recommendations for, for how to move forward. Next. And just a quick note, if you've looked through it, you may have noticed that a lot of the data in there is from the 2015 to 2019 ACS from the Census Bureau. That was the most recent data available when we developed the plan or the analysis. We acknowledged that while that doesn't, most of the data in here doesn't capture the COVID pandemic, we are certainly aware of it. Our consultants address it throughout, and, and basically, their takeaway was a lot of what they saw were really pre-existing trends that had been growing and building for a while, and we, we understand that COVID, COVID probably made some of those worse, and we will continue to look at the census data as we start getting real numbers that reflect the pandemic. Next. Getting. So I'm just gonna give an overview of some of the takeaways from, from the demographic housing and economic analysis to sort of help us understand where we are now. Next. So slow growth and shrinking households, these were a couple of key takeaways. You can see from the graph on the left that while Dutchess County in the past has always added population and grown pretty predictably, in the last decade, our, our population really leveled off, and that's sort of a new thing for us to be thinking about, right? We're not sort of adding, adding population the way we always have in the past. On, on the flip side, the number of households and the household size is also important, because what you'll see up here on the top right is between 2010 and 2020, even though our population leveled off, we still added five thousand households. And the reason why is because our household size has continued to decrease. So we have fewer people per household in 2020 than we did in 2010. And that's a pretty steady trend, that's been going on for a long time. We used to be up over three people per household. Next. No surprise, we have an aging population. The chart on the left is showing us population change by age groups between 2000 and 2019. It might be a little hard to see from the back, but basically, all those green bars on the right are age forty-five and up, and you can see there's growth in those age brackets. And under forty-five, except for a little blip in the twenties, that is all population loss in those age cohorts, so we're aging, no surprise.
Sorry, is this, the, the top bars, twen- ten to nineteen, twenty to twenty-four? Is that age?
Those are age, those are age cohorts.
Age cohort, okay, got it, got it, got it.
And then on the right-hand side, looking at median age and how it's, you can't really quite see it, but the blue numbers are Dutchess County and the gray numbers are the nation. So back in 2000, Dutchess County was about a year older than the nation as a whole, and by 2019, we're more than four years older. So we're also aging faster than the rest of the country. Next. Incomes have lagged behind housing costs. There's a lot going on here, let me just unpack it for you. So the, the teal are, is the ownership market, pink is the renter market. This is showing the percent change for teal, it's the percent change in median home value, which is the darker bar, almost ninety percent over, between 2000 and 2019, versus owner income, which grew by almost sixty percent. So home costs grew more than owner income. For the renter side, the light pink is growth in median gross rent, which was over seventy percent, whereas renter incomes grew at less than forty percent. And of particular note about the renter incomes is they didn't, it didn't even keep pace with inflation. So that's why, that's part of one of the reasons why we see stressors in, in the housing market.
Now, could I just say one thing about this chart? Is that the difference between the home value and the rent is that the home value, in some ways, is not a real number, and the rent is. And what I mean by that is when my home value goes up, my mortgage doesn't go up. My taxes go up, but my, may go up, but my, so my cost doesn't really go up there. Because that rent is a real number, because it goes up.
Yeah, in fact, if you already own, you have equity that.
Right, you, you got, so it's not, it's, I'm fine with the chart, but I just wanted to point that out, that from a cost perspective.
Yes.
They're sort of different.
Next. So cost burdens have risen, especially for renters. You may be aware that a house owner considers the cost burden, that they spend more than thirty percent of their income on house costs, and for renters, that's the rent and the utilities. This is showing cost burden, number of cost burden, renter households in 2000, which is the dark pink bar, 2010 and 2019 is the light pink by income group. So underneath, less than twenty thousand, twenty to thirty-five, thirty-five to fifty is the one we've got highlighted there. So we're not surprised to see that on the lower end, there's, cost burden is not a new thing, right? It's, there's always been a lot of cost burden there. But, but an interesting takeaway from this is that in 2000, that middle income group, ten percent of those households were considered cost burden, renter households. By 2019, seventy-one percent of those households were cost burdened. So that's a huge exponential jump in the number of households that are struggling, renter households that are struggling. And even as you go up in the income brackets, fifty to seventy-five and over seventy-five, even though the percentages are much lower, you're still seeing that exponential change. You're going from three percent to thirty-four percent, and then from point four up to six percent in the highest income category. So we're seeing more cost burden.
And those categories, I think, are a lot of what we would talk about as workforce housing.
Right. Next. Widening income gaps are influencing the market. Again, there's a lot going on here. What this is trying to show us is how much extra monthly income households had between 2010 and 2019, and it's broken down into quintiles. So you've got the lowest twentieth percentile on the left and the ninety-fifth on the right. And what it's showing us is the folks in that lowest, lowest quintile, were really only bringing in about a hundred and fifty dollars more over the course of that, we'll call it a decade, less than six percent. When you get to the middle, the median income, which is the yellow bar, those folks were making about nine hundred and fifty dollars more a month in 2019 than they were in 2010, and that was about a sixteen percent increase. But when we get up to the higher ends, those folks are making thousands of dollars more each month, and you're up into the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five percent growth. So there's more income growth happening at the higher level, and I'll explain why that matters throughout the whole market, another slide or two. Next. So one of the things we ask the consultant to do is a gap analysis, and this basically pairs the cost of a unit with the households that that unit would be affordable for. And so you're either gonna have a surplus of units or a deficit of units. Teal is ownership, pink is renter, you've got income brackets along the bottom, and the jelly beans at the top, if it's a red jelly bean, it means there's not enough units matched to those households, that are affordable to those households. And if there's green, it means there's a surplus of units. And so while there's a lot of interesting things going on here, the big takeaway is we're not surprised to see the deficit at the lower ends of the income brackets, but there's also a deficit of units that match the incomes at the top end. And why does that matter? Because when folks at those higher income brackets are looking to participate in our housing market, and they look around and they say, well, you know, I could afford more than what's available right now, but I gotta pick from what's out there, so I'm gonna reach down into the middle, and I'm gonna start plucking from that. And then they're influencing that market. Maybe those are cash buyers, maybe those are some of the folks that are bidding some of the prices up, and then that ripples out in both, you know, in both directions. Next. So then what do we do about it?
Excuse me, Heather, if you can just go back to that previous slide, you, you mentioned.
Can you back up one?
Oh, sorry.
Back? Thank you.
So you're, you're referring to the, to the gap analysis here?
Mm-hmm.
And, and the high, you know, high net income or high net worth are gonna dip back into, when they, you know, exit their, you know, home, they're gonna dip back into the middle of the market, right?
Well, if they're looking to participate in the housing market, right? They wanna rent, they wanna buy.
So, so, but is this, this is owner and renter?
Yeah, it's two separate.
Okay.
Right, there's the blues, the owner, from less than twenty thousand to a hundred thousand plus, and then renter, same income.
And overall, this data is through 2019, is there any caveats because of COVID? Or we didn't get there yet?
Well, like I mentioned at the beginning, so the.
I was, I was out of the room.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry. Most of the, the data that was available when we did this, we used the most, the most recent data.
Sure.
There's always a, a healthy lag with census information, right? So the 2015 to 2019 ACS was, for the most part, the data source. And the report acknowledges in several places how COVID likely exacerbated trends we were already seeing, and it may have made some things worse, but.
I didn't mean the.
But the fundamentals, we think, didn't change the fundamentals. And so, you know, I think sometimes people want the, not you, but people want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, right? So we could wait for perfect data. And you know what, when the perfect data on COVID comes out?
Let me go get it.
We'll be in a recession.
I'll have to go.
That's what I'm saying. When the perfect data that shows the height of COVID comes out, we'll be into a recession, and then everyone will say, well, wait till the recession dies.
Right, so I, this is another question to follow up on what Don asked initially, the higher wealth category. Does this data include people coming into the area as well as people already in the area moving around? You know, moving from one bucket to another?
So what this really is, is, I, I call it sort of a matching, it's looking at all the housing stock and all of the people who are here, and it's just looking, it's just one way to look at the. And it's just looking, it's just one way to look at the market, to see how your fundamentals are and whether it disconnects. I think the big takeaway here is I find people tend to be in two camps when it comes to housing. One camp says, "We don't need any more high-end, we need affordable." And the other says, "We have enough affordable, we all need high-end." And to us, the answer is, "We need both."
We need both. And just because, what, just because someone, a household might be in one of these income categories, it doesn't mean maybe they're, maybe they found a cheaper apartment and they're, they're actually consuming a unit that, that matches a lower income, and they've got a deal. Or that, that tends to happen more in, in, in ownership. But, so, people may not slot in where they're technically shown here, it's just a way to evaluate what we, the units we have against the household.
The one thing that we can say is just, I think, not even superficially, but from what we see, that for this area during COVID, the numbers, the values, cost of housing climbed, and the cost of rent climbed.
Oh, yes.
So these numbers have only gotten tougher for some people whose wages did not climb.
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
And so before...
Oh, the wages are climbing.
They are.
So is inflation.
Yes, that's what we, so, yeah, yeah.
And so actually, I will, before we bump forward, I'm just going to point out, as we get into strategies and recommendations, this, this gap analysis chart for the renters is going to come into play. So these three lowest categories, you see how there's some deficit of units and some surplus of units? Those numbers come into play. Next. Uh, next again. So, what can we do to help address some of the housing need in the county? So the recommendation of the report is to focus efforts on the greatest level of need, which is the renter households earning less than 50,000, which were those first three brackets. And so, when we do the math, next. All right, it's so much smoother when you have your own.
Yeah, I know. Apologize for that.
That's okay. When we do the math, it equals a total catch-up needed of 2,155 housing interventions or units, I can explain that in a little more detail in a minute, to sort of resolve those existing burdens.
What can do, what would the, what's, maybe it's coming up, what would be the rent that would need to be charged to fit in this definition here? In other words, at that certain percentage of household income, what, what does that equate to in rent for these units?
Can you do that, Matt, real quick? Okay. So, and I'll keep talking while she's crunching the numbers. So because, you know, we're not going to build 2,155 units in a year, so we, we chunked it up into an incremental catch-up goal of 108 interventions per year over 20 years, countywide. And so do you have that number?
Well, so we've actually had this, you know, when you do this report, you sort of have to simplify things. And we didn't necessarily define in here, there's obviously a big difference between a family, a single person who makes 50,000 and a family of four that makes 50,000. So, but a family that, somebody who makes 50,000 can afford $1,250, and that's when they're paying 30% of their income, and that includes all utilities. So, so, but that's where we're sort of talking about.
Right.
Okay.
And of course, that 50,000 is the top of the category that we've set where we want to address the need.
So, and you took 50,000 times 30% divided by 12, and that's how you got to 1,250.
Yeah. Mad line affordability is pretty easy.
Including utilities, I mean, you got to take out, I mean, that means it's really $1,100.
Right. And where in Duchess County do you find something like that?
Not anymore.
Well, that's what we're here to talk about.
Right. Yep, next. So we have, we have sort of a broad goal, and then we wanted to make sure that it wasn't too ambiguous about where those housing interventions might go, right? Because...
Everybody goes.
Everybody goes, put it over there, right? So, we worked with the consultants to come up with a methodology for what we're calling a fair share approach for, for distributing those housing interventions throughout the county. And it's based on, it takes into account where all of the households are in the county, where all of the renter households making less than 50,000 are in the county, right? Because that's our, that's our target group. And then also the location of jobs.
Yeah.
Next. And so then we did this, this is a suggested fair share distribution, there's no mandatory component to this. It's just a way to try to think about different community needs and what could fulfill those needs. And so what you'll see is, I know it's really small, but if, I see you guys have the report, and so you can see it in more detail. We broke the cities out individually, and then what we did was we grouped the rest of the municipalities sort of by sub-area, and we show an overall rule for those portions of the county, but then we also do break it down in, into community by community. Because at the end of the day, every municipality is in charge of their own land use rights, right? So at, at the end of the day, we all have some skin in the game with, with how we tackle this issue. Next.
I, I have one question. Going back and talking about the incremental, the most difficult thing is in building new apartments, if they're building them high-end. And I, you know, you'll see 18 new apartments, which one or two is affordable. So how, how is this meeting the new market demand plus the incremental ever going to flatten out to be sufficient?
So the housing intervention...
Because I saw Beacon, and I know Beacon, I'm just like, oh my Jesus.
Right.
I've been there my whole life, it's crazy.
So, for, when we talk about housing interventions, the, the easiest one to think about is new construction, right?
Right.
But there are other things, there are other things that we can support, which I should get into.
Okay, that's fine.
Just give me a minute.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, one of the most, I think, is exciting sort of outcomes of the report is a recommendation that the county creates a housing trust fund to help pay for some of these housing interventions, and help us leverage other public and private funds to do just that. And the report recommends a $2 million annual allocation to the trust fund. The county executive, you're probably aware, actually has pledged over 12, was it 12.2? I can't remember the exact number. An initial sort of seed money pot of over $12 million to help sort of get this off, up and running. And so we're, we're sort of working on that right now, it's still in the planning stages, but, next. So what are some of the things that that housing trust fund could support? There's a variety of tools, right? There's, there's, there's just plain old constructing new apartments, right? But you, you could construct all affordable apartments, you could build some market rate, and then have inclusionary zoning policies that then you end up with some, you know, some affordable. One of the ideas we've talked about is a rehab program for existing housing stock, right? So maybe in some of our rural communities where you're not going to land an 80-unit apartment building, but you have some aging housing stock, maybe there's an opportunity there to renovate the older homes, create a few income-eligible rental, rental units, and sort of create new affordable housing within existing housing stock. Subsidies for inclusive units in mixed-income developments, subordinate second mortgages, tax exemption policies, which is sort of the reason why...
What we're here, what reason we're here to see you.
Part two of, of, of why we're here. So this is, that's really sort of the final slide that I have, related to the housing needs assessment. Do you have any other questions before we sort of dig into the tax exemption policy recommendation?
No, I was going to get back to the housing vouchers. Is that program still in existence? Has it increased or decreased on the amount of vouchers within the county or municipalities?
So that's a federal program, right? And, and this is, this idea would be, well, maybe the county could create its own county-level housing voucher program, that's not first on the table. But do you want to talk about the federal?
Sure. The number of vouchers nationally has been pretty stable for the last couple decades. With the stimulus, there are some vouchers that have been put in, but they're sort of time limited, they're sort of time limited on them, so it's not clear at the end of the year. But it's a, it's been a fairly stable, stable, you know, population. The reason that we have vouchers even on here is that, because we are, as much as a housing person, we see, we see the place for them, to do a local voucher program is sort of fraught for a variety of reasons. One, there's a lot of, of infrastructure that you need to run one of these programs and to do that. Also, if you have one in your neighboring communities and have one, you know, there are things that should be done at certain levels of government, at state levels and federal levels, and, and I, as much of a housing advocate as I am, I actually think that the housing voucher should be done at a national level so that, you know, everybody, even if New York did them, you know, people could then move to New York, right? Because New York will, they can do a voucher for housing, and Florida won't, right? That'll probably be good, people's... But it's just one of those things that you don't want, that your housing policy that sort of influence that. But we do have it on here because we are concerned with the potential declining in our population, and there's a concern about, we're really trying to try to balance here between building. You build too much in a declining market, you can crash the, you can, you can really negatively impact the market. However, if we build, could we stop that potential decline because people will want to come here? Like, what is it, what's the chicken and what's the egg? Right? I mean, you guys probably dealt with this all the time too, you know, in attracting jobs and, and, and that sort of thing, so...
Just a comment, you know, one of the things that can drive housing, especially with housing with larger families, so to speak, is schools. And we have a mismatch, I believe in some way, Duchess County in the city of Poughkeepsie, where we have a lot of housing stock that could be improved for both rental and sale, but as soon as somebody has children, they exit the city because of the quality of the schools. So isn't that a component in, in improving schools in certain areas as well?
Yeah, definitely, it is. You know, one of the things that we are going to talk to school districts, because the school districts, you know, people, you know, I mean, you know, people talk a lot about taxes in this area. I think often, when I really, when we really talk to people, it's really the school taxes. But it does, it does appear to us, and we're going to look a little more detail, that the municipalities have really been working hard. I mean, I'm not saying that the schools haven't, I think there, there's drivers of those taxes that, that, that are beyond their control in terms of the requirements and some of the things that they have, have to do. But the, the, and I think a lot of the municipal is their response to what they know is happening at the school tax level, and also how the state has come in with the STAR, you know, the STAR program there. But, you know, we don't necessarily have a lot of large families.
Right.
We, we have a declining population, so it's interesting, people used to not want...
Declining household size.
Household size. You know, it was interesting, I, I've been trying to just think about this, like, you know, people didn't want development because, it was more kids in school. And now they don't want the development because, and there's declining enrollment, and now we're getting like a different story, and it's like, hey, so we don't want development.
No, actually, what, what we hear sometimes is people favor like industrial development, like these warehouses we just talked about. Oh, it's only 100 jobs, so there, there won't be more kids. But the, the problem is the school systems have fixed costs that are based on a population that was larger than it is now.
And we, we're going to have a conversation with them, because there was affordable development appalling. And, and actually, we've heard some stuff in some other towns where there's some apartments that are proposed, and there were people, you know, running around saying that every two-bedroom apartment was going to have four kids in it, you know? And, and we sat down and we said, you know, we have to, let's have an honest conversation about what's actually going on in the school district, and how our building and not building, you know, affects that. And that's actually a nice segue, it's funny, one of the reasons we're here is, is that, you know, we'd like to start a conversation with you guys about a tax policy that could support housing. Now I know that you guys have supported, well, obviously, I would consider fundamentally housing projects with small, mixed use. But we think that there's a real economic case to be made for you guys supporting just housing projects. Now I think that there has been, I think, a state comptroller's opinion that said that the IDAs can do that if it's grounded in good poli, in policy, because there was a case out of, out of Nassau, there's also a court case, Ryan versus, there's a court case about it, where they came down and said, "As long as you have a good case..."
What for?
About why that is. And we were, you know, we were not eavesdropping until we heard the term workforce housing in the, in the last, and they started talking about, you know, they were talking about how the jobs are not like low income, low income jobs, they're logistics jobs, you know, but, but there's still jobs that are probably going to struggle a little bit to pay $2,800 a month and $2,500 a month.
Absolutely.
And that's what we'd like to work...
The, the jobs that were part of that application are at your 1,250 per month that you did.
Right.
They have, I agree, I agree.
Right, you know, and that, that we really work for a policy, and a policy to keep those young people here, or to attract them here, you know?
So do, do we, do you think, looking at our council, do we have, at, in some point in the future, is a what-for affordability of housing is a reason that we would, could grant a, just 100% housing, a, a pilot of some kind because, because it would help to lower the cost?
You're, you're permitted to approve commercial projects.
Correct, apartment complex.
That Ann was talking about specifically refers to, and, and it finds that housing projects are commercial. So you are permitted to do it. I think a while ago, I sent Mark a memo with all of the supporting information on that. So you can do it. It's, it's a matter of, it's much simpler, actually, a lot of the times when we're talking about the commercial aspect of these things, we're talking about keeping it, the retail portion below a one-third so that you're permitted to do that, because you're really not permitted to do retail. But commercial, you, you can do it, I mean, you're permitted to do it.
But it's a challenge, because unless you're talking about the cost of a community of houses, you're, you're not going to be able to grant individual homeowners some...
No, that, what it is, it has to be a commercial project and...
Got it.
Apartment, you know, we've got a number of those.
Yeah.
Where there were just apartments, and our example is, is the LaGrange project.
Yeah.
That was not affordable. Right, that's, and, and they're just going, they're, they're reacting to a lot of what was going on with everybody coming up from Westchester, and if they, they can work remotely, they're getting the high, you know, they're, they're getting the high income. And New York City, you know, New York City's salary, and you can work remotely, it's a different world.
Yeah, and we can certainly look at the policies, there are IDAs throughout the state that have started to do some of this housing, some of these policies, you know, and we've seen policies where you'll give the exemption, if 20% of the units are workforce, right? And I think you guys could really fit a sweet spot too, between where the tax credit projects, right, stop at 60%. And there's like sort of a cliff where you go from being eligible for a tax credit project to having to be in the marketplace, and you just can't make that. And if the IDA could be in that sort of sweet spot there with 20%, I think that would be a really great place, and we'd be glad to work with you on that. Because you know, I was, one of the things, I try to spend as little time on social media as I can for my mental health, but I, I go on every once in a while and I look and, and, you know, I see these things like, "We don't need more housing, we need more jobs." And you're like, "Okay, where are those people?" Like, they don't sleep at the office, you know, or they don't sleep in the warehouse.
Well, some of us.
You're really dedicating one of us. Mostly the ones that are sleeping out at office.
It's bad when you have dreams and you renovated your office and Kuda Bag.
And there's also, you know, there's just, there's also, sometimes I hear this stuff like, "Well, the partners don't pay taxes." It's like, you know, we can actually make the case that they pay a higher effective tax rate, and they actually use less services. I mean, often, they provide amenities onsite, right? Pools, playgrounds, they're not using it, and they're taking care of their own amenities, their own roads, and, you know, in Eastdale, they're doing it all, right?
It's the ultimate in density of housing, really.
And then, and just then, even if you do have some public infrastructure that, the density makes it much less, and I think we need to make a case as a community that they are actually paying more than their way, and whatever you guys are providing to me is just leveling the playing field, and I won't even get into the STAR exemptions that homeowners get, the checks that they get back, you know, and those are all benefits. I could argue that renters are subsidizing owners.
All right, so in the in the, just because of time.
No, you have-
So what I want you to do is, I mean, because we all, the big picture, we all have stakes in that. But this organization, I think what you're telling us is where we can really, in the future, consider something as in the tax exemption policies, right? And so bring that, bring that like full circle to that and, you know.
We would like, I, you know, I know there's been a little bit of a hesitancy in dealing with, it's been my understanding, in just residential-only projects. And if you guys are okay with that, we would like to sort of work, start working with your staff on a policy that, and you guys, on a policy that I think would meet the community's goals and that you would feel comfortable with, that would support the the same applications that were just before us, before you.
Is it specific to affordable housing or apartments in general? I mean, what do we talk about here?
I think, I I guess if I had to answer, it would be both. But obviously, the more important, to some degree, the more important is the workforce housing, right? But there is something to be said, you know, people, there's also camps. Some people say, just put more supply in and it'll take care of itself. And and I think that that's true to some degree, and it's also not true. So that's where I think if you're doing sort of eighty-twenty deals, eighty percent, it helps just in the marketplace. It'll help maybe take some of the high end down a little bit, make it more manageable, it pushes through the whole market. But also, we do need some controlled, restricted workforce units.
So so maybe perhaps that would be the start, is to work with staff to come up with some some preliminary conceptual boundaries, making sure that it's something that we legally can do, and then come back to us with some suggestions. Does the committee feel comfortable with that?
If I can interject quickly, Mr. Chairman. So I, when you mentioned that there was some discomfort with housing-only projects, I would include myself as being part of that discomfort. And that is primarily been because I've always seen the fact that our only policy regarding housing is whether it meets the commercial test or not. There is no depth further than that. And so I think this is, you know, probably a rather, a little bit late in the in the game, but nevertheless, we absolutely have to do it, is that is create a clear and pretty much detailed policy with detailed criteria to guide, you know, to guide us into the future. I us being the IDA into the future of housing, because it certainly affects location. Now, if I think about, for example, on location, the project we did up in Hyde Park, I I did end up voting in favor of it because it was a pretty distressed property in in a number of ways. But, you know, there are there are distinct locational advantages and disadvantages to every property as regards affordable housing and the cost, the sort of the community costs. So, you know, obviously, we could all go on and on about our own experiences and thoughts on this. But the bottom line is a detailed set of goals and criteria is what I'm interested in.
I would think that we, if possible, affordable housing would be a good focus. But again, I guess I would look to you folks to talk about that a little bit, you know, under this other concept of building, you know, just increasing the number generally might help, you know, move people into the right spot. But again, I I mean, affordable housing would be the ultimate, you know, you know.
For you guys, obviously, I would really use the term workforce.
Workforce.
I tend to sort of dislike, we just, we tend to, affordable housing advocates like to come up with new fancy names, thinking we're gonna trick somebody. But in this case, it is workforce. That's because your your focus is jobs.
Correct.
Not necessarily that housing is affordable. It's it's affordable for people who are workers, you know? And also, though, for workers, you know, we are hearing at the high end, we hear things from like Marist. You know, they're, these are higher-income jobs, and people are saying, you don't have the housing stock. So although although that's not maybe the focus of a policy, you know, somebody's saying they don't want to come here because we don't have the stock for them, that's not good.
I can tell you that that is a fact because I serve on the Vassar Hospital Board. And, you know, when they bring in physicians, that water, that, I forget what that complex is along the river that the Benner has built, some of the projects that have come before us, the Grange, Eastdale, they are all sold out and have waiting lists.
Yep, no.
So you're right, that pushes pressure down. Those people have to be here. They're gonna take some of the other units. So it drives prices up as well.
Yeah, so I think it's important that we sort of enable that, too.
All right.
Great.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Yep, okay. Tourism, first and second quarter performance outcomes.
Yeah, what's going on? Thanks, guys. I apologize for for not getting all of you the outcomes we hand-delivered this morning and emailed yesterday. It takes us, it's it's hard to get some of that data so quickly at the end of the quarter, but it is there. Just to start with some basic industry updates, according to U.S. Travel Association, even as consumer and business sentiment is slipping in the face of higher inflation and concerns about recession, so far, travel recovery has remained intact because of all that pent-up demand from COVID and consumer savings, although we're seeing that dwindle. Domestic leisure travel spending has already surpassed pre-pandemic levels when adjusted for inflation, and international inbound travel making a big comeback, especially with the elimination of the route-to-departure testing. So that is projected to grow rapidly through the rest of 2022, and then it will likely slow down in 2023 to 26 due to the overall decline in consumer sentiment, largely due to inflation and possible economic recession. Longwoods International released their tracking study yesterday, and they said only twelve percent of those surveyed said that rising gas prices are not impacting their travel plans. Forty-four percent say they're reducing the number of trips because of those high prices at the pump. And a similar percentage also shifting to destinations closer to home, which is actually great for us. So with Duchess County located just a short car or train ride away from the largest metropolitan area in the nation, those folks, instead of, you know, maybe going to Maine or Lake George or Lake Placid or wherever, are gonna stop here in the Hudson Valley instead. And so that's how we're working to make sure that they think of us first. You'll know in the past that we did a lot of marketing and focus in Washington D.C. and Philadelphia, because that's a great drive market for us. But this year, we're pulling it in tighter to that tri-state area because of the the economic situation right now. Locally, tourism seems to be rebounding strongly. According to Smith Travel Research, whose STAR report we just started subscribing to, this year, we get hotel data. So I can tell you that 2022 hotel occupancy in Duchess County through May is up six point seven percent over the same period last year. Average daily rate is up twenty percent. That's humongous for us. Just to lay, that's about a hundred and forty-seven dollars a night on average. So weekends in May and June, we were ninety-five-ish percent occupancy. So our hotels are packed. So when people tell you we don't need more hotels, they are wrong, because we could use more hotels. Because what that does is that drives up prices. So, you know, the high that we saw, you know, over that graduation weekend when we had Marist and Vassar graduations here, people were paying two hundred and thirty-six dollars a night at a property like the Holiday Inn Express, you know, or the Quality Inn even. You know, some of those, what you think of as budget-friendly hotels, because demand is so very high, the rates that they're getting are off the charts for for what people expect and and want to pay. So we are excited about the return of international travel. We have had visitors from Australia already stopping into our office to say hello and get more travel information. They're here, a mother-daughter were here, and and had, we had a lovely visit with them, and and they heard about us through their travel planner and their travel agent. And so that's great. We do continue to work with I Love New York to partner with them to reach visitors in Australia, and now New Zealand is a new market for them that they're working with, as well as our traditional European markets. Hudson Valley Tourism represented all of us at IPW in June. That's the U.S. Travel Association's major marketplace here in the United States with with international travel buyers. So we worked with them. We also were working with Hudson Valley Tourism to welcome Play Airlines to Stewart International Airport. That's that new Icelandic airline that's flying daily in and out of Stewart and connects us with twenty-two cities in Europe through Reykjavik. Those direct flights from Reykjavik are coming. So with that, we've hosted a number of FAMs. We've done seven FAMs for nineteen members of the media from the U.K., Ireland, France, Germany, Switzerland, and Austria. All loved our area. What's not to love? They were originally wanting to go to New York City. They were gonna spend a day here. And then they decided, once we sold them on everything, they spent the whole time here. And they didn't go to New York City at all, which we think is great. So we continue to work on that. We've met with twenty-eight tour operators from ten countries in Europe and South America, trained fifty-six German travel agents on Duchess County attractions. And we also, we have a partner that we fund through IDA dollars in Germany, who works with us in the Swiss, Austrian, and German market, Christian Zerbiyan. And because he speaks German and knows all those travel operators, is able to do an amazing job of of selling our destination to those folks. We also developed a number of bookable campaigns with five major tour operators. So what that means is when we visit with those different travel agents, people in those countries use them. They don't book, we do, through OTAs and things like that. So we have hotels and airline packages and attractions that are are bookable. So they can say, you wanna come to the Hudson Valley for seventeen hundred dollars, period? Here's what it is. So we don't have any data to show that yet, because that's just getting out on their books in that international buying season. So like when you look at the the budget and what we spent, it hasn't been a lot yet, because most of that happens later in the year, that that sales season. Our group travel market is back. You'll see buses at our hotels. Know that on average, they spend sixteen thousand dollars in a twenty-four-hour period for each bus. So we were at the American Bus Association Marketplace back in January, and we met with thirty-eight group tour operators. We consistently helped them.
Does that number include the lodging?
Does what number include lodging?
For bus?
Yeah, yeah.
And how, what, just?
It depends on the bus size. So buses, you can usually get, if it's a normal-sized bus, it's like fifty-two people. But they're not packing-
And they spend sixteen thousand and-
A twenty-four-hour, that's, and that's an old number, but we don't, we don't have anything newer. So it's probably much higher than that, because prices are higher. So it's it's a, it's a good, good impact that they have and worth an audience to reach out to, because once you develop relationships with these group tour operators, they come again and again and again and again. And that's great for us. So we help them create those packages. We were in Esprit Garden yesterday. They've had multiple tour groups come in. We're connecting them with another one that typically does seven tours here in the Hudson Valley a year. And we are a major destination for those groups. They love the CIA, they love the national parks. And then we try to get them to go do some of the other things, to sprinkle in and round out their trips. So that's that domestically. I'm gonna share with, internationally, we've hosted Dan and Carl twice now, and they just published this book. It's in German. The English version will be coming out. But if you open the inside flap, you can see they've gone all over the world. They only made one stop in the U.S., and that was New York City. And but they did come to us, so we have the, they talk about all these amazing destinations, and then they include us here in the Hudson Valley. You can see Duchess County is listed there and all the things that they did there. So it's a pretty big deal to be included. There's them flying in the biplane at the old Ryback Aerodrome. But it's it's nice to be the the finishing piece of this book to say, what a wonderful trip they had in Duchess County. So we're excited about that. We didn't pay anything to be a part. We did pay to host them, but they loved this so much, they wanted to include Duchess County in their promotions. So that was, that was a big deal we're excited about. Some highlights of our 2022 activities include a three-and-a-half-day photo shoot we did in the spring to help fill out our asset library. And we also made sure to include that we were showing people who have disabilities, LGBTQ-plus people, people of color. You can see some of those photos that we've used in our our travel guide. This is the new edition that came out at the end of April. And then I'll pass around some of these other ads that you can see being used. This one here, this is not IDA money, this is county money with our CFA grant that we got. We are doing, the the one exception to our more locally-focused marketing is this in Savannah and Tampa. And because with our grant proposal that we wrote to them, we wanted to market to a new audience that is flying direct into Stewart International Airport, because we want to support the airport. We want to bring more flights in, which is good for all of us who live here, but also good for our businesses to bring them there. So doing another car wrap that we've done before, some other pieces that are going, and some of those gorgeous photos that we have. When we last met, I I shared with you the brand-new craft beverage trail and map that promotes the thirty producers that we have here in the county. And then at the end of May, we launched the Duchess Tourism Taste Finder. And so this is, there's gonna be four tours, and that's the the new ad that shows what those are all gonna be. But I can pass these around, too. This was an ad in Valley Table promoting the Taste Finder. There's an example of a newsletter that was in the Hearst Publications. And so what the Taste Finder Craft Beverage Trail is, is this one is a discount pass. People can buy a one, a three, or a ninety-day pass. And if you get the ninety-day, it's about a seventy-seven percent discount on the different tastings or offerings and perks that you can get at thirteen of our producers, including Fishkill Farms, which is really exciting. I know, more than half of the participants are farm-based producers of craft beverages. We've got all corners of the county covered. We've got all types of spirits from wine, beer, cider, you know, your whiskeys, and then the One Meadery that we have. They're all participating. So that's a really cool piece of this.
The Taste Finder, that's, that seems like the big hit right now. Where do you find a pair of finale? Where do you get these? How does somebody come across the Taste Finder?
So it's, I will tell you, thank you for asking.
It's like my son comes up and, you know.
Yeah, so we promote it all over our social, on our website, it's there, but there's paid advertising that goes behind that. So running mid-May through August, there's paid social media. There's a New York Times banner ad with a video. There's YouTube video that's paid advertising. There's digital pre-roll. It's in Valley Table Magazine and digital ads and E-Blast with them. It's in Hearst Publishing's e-newsletter, and the banner ads in the New York Metro-
So somebody's not on social media, how do they then?
They they get served an ad if you are in that, in that New York State DMA, which, depending on what your phone-
Like somebody coming off the the train, Poughkeepsie Beacon, wherever, how do they then find out, hey, look what I can do? That's what I'm wondering, because so many people, I'm like, I'm trying to-
You can help.
I just try to go off the top of my head, the destinations in Duchess County that are so often-
Digital board at the train station.
There's not, there's not, there's not, unfortunately. Like I said, all those ways to get served ads are happening. And then we were able to get our brochures and guides and information to the Poughkeepsie train station this year. That has been one of my goals forever. They have those empty wooden racks that were there, and with COVID, they stopped printing their own guides. So I said, hey, can we put our stuff there? And they love it. And every single time I'm there, every single time one of us is there filling the racks, people come up and take stuff. The people who work there love it, because it gives them tools to help people when they get questions answered.
Well, that's that's it right there, the tool to help people.
Right, exactly. So, you know, we're trying to get the word out. We would love it if you helped. That would be great.
You guys are, I I just Googled Taste Finder, just Taste Finder. And you guys are, I'm gonna call it the second page Duchess County Tourism comes up, if someone just heard Taste Finder.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I've never heard of Taste Finder.
This is brand new.
Oh, I understand. No, I, I-
I love this.
Yes, I love that, too. That's gonna be going out to people, all the different trips.
I know, but so many people ask me.
Yes, so you should send them to duchesstourism.com.
I I've never-
Or call me up.
Unfortunately, it doesn't, it's not the first thing that comes to my head.
Now, you gotta work on that.
I know.
Are you talking about this Taste Finder app is is on the website or?
It's not actually an app. It's a digital pass.
Oh, okay.
The information is on the website.
That's what I'm saying, it's, yeah, it's.
Yeah, so and the QR code is there in the ads. It'll lead people to it.
Because I'm in, I'm in Beacon my whole life, and it's just exploding.
Yeah.
And and those people are gonna use social media, most of them.
But even if they're not-
But I'm trying to get them outside of Beacon, because it's not just Beacon, that's so much cool thing.
Yeah, so that's why there's thirteen, it was open to everybody, all the the places that you can go visit. We we offered it to everybody. Thirteen people said, yes, we wanna be a part of this. And so, you know, and even Tim in at duchesstourism.com in the top right, there's a little kind of compass logo.
I see that.
If you tap it.
Well, you've got two things, Trail Finder and Taste Finder.
Yes, so the Taste Finder is new, the 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 Family Connection Finder just went up a few weeks ago before the Fourth of July. And that's not a paid, the only one that's a paid pass is the craft beverage one. The other one is family, and that's a discount or perk pass. And so we're continuously adding to that. There's gonna be a Trails one that we're working on now, because we want to help move some people away from those over-traveled trails to other parts of the county. So we're developing that one right now. That's gonna be a gamified one. So you check in at the different places. And then as we move into more of an indoor season, we're gonna focus on arts and culture. There'll be an arts and culture pass.
Yeah, and I mean, there's the Trail Finder, you know, we have the Duchess County Rail Trail, too.
Yeah, sure.
So that's a little, but anyway.
But that, and that'll be a part of the the Trails one.
So I just move on. I just have one more question. So are the municipalities tied into this?
We send everything out to them. We try to talk to as many people as we can.
Here's the thing, I'm on a community page on Pauling, Beacon, Dover, and every- And every Friday, Thursday, well, what can I do with my three-year-old? What can I do with my thirty-year-old? What can I do with my grandparents? And this would be like a great little paste and paste, boom, go look here.
Yeah.
It is going tourism.
It's just every page I'm on, what do I have to do?
Us old, you know, fogies, you know, some of them.
And that's why.
We have this in our basket at home because we have that happen. Friends say, what do we do when we come to Duchess? And it's like.
Municipalities need to engage and throw this into their social media pages.
Yeah, and some of them do.
No, I agree.
Some of them are brave at it. You know, the folks in Milton are doing a great job. You know, I just had meetings with the folks in Pauling, with their chamber, with their mayor, with their business association to try to loop them. They don't have producers out there, but all the other.
All right, we got to keep moving.
Yeah, this is good.
And we would love it if you helped. So that would be great.
Ambassador.
Are you still going through or?
Just because I got to give you Hudson Valley Film and Arts.
All right.
So that, that's just the last piece of that. The Film Commission is, they've tracked more than twenty-one productions to date and promoted more than eleven that are premiering now, that filmed here before but are premiering now in theaters and on TV and streaming services. Their estimated direct spending for Duchess to date is seven point one million. So we're doing well. Pretty Little Liars, Poker Face, and Three Women are the biggest contributors to that spending. In addition, productions, Michelson Studios Three, we might have talked about last time. He was going to develop I Park into a studio and that partnership fell through. So he bought the facility out in Wingdale and he's developing and bringing productions there.
He's called Sandra, that.
I think he's working with, they're working, Lions. So we'll have more. And, and that's great. What's good about film studios and productions is that expands throughout the year what can be filmed here. It's not relying on being outside, they can build sets inside. So that's going to help us year-round. So that's really important. More than sixteen thousand six hundred room nights have been due to film production so far this year. Duchess County's hosted seventeen days of production at twelve locations in Poughkeepsie, Beacon, Hopewell, Red Hook, and Tivoli. But July, that's going to jump because there's a number of big productions coming in July. Ninety-one crew jobs and more than a hundred residents have been hired as background extras. So things are chugging along with the film industry and it's a really big, important part of our economy here. Arts Mid Hudson, they continue to host in-person and virtual gallery exhibitions. If you haven't been out to Millbrook Vineyards and Winery, get your craft beverage pass and go there and you can see the Art in the Loft exhibit where they have a competition for the art leaders. You can vote on them. Sixty-three artists submitted, there's fourteen finalists to choose from. Hudson Valley Gospel Festival is coming up at Boden Park, October first. They're planning for that and they had many events that are happening leading up to that. There are partners in the arts grant program. They got thirty-one applications, twenty-two projects were funded that will serve more than thirty-one thousand residents and visitors. They've also administered the statewide community regrants, formerly the decentralization program. And then Duchess County, uh, visitor, Arts and Attractions, there were thirty-two programs that were funded through that. So that's exciting. And then their education initiatives, they have the Thrive Making a Career in the Arts event. And that brought regional employers together in a job fair format with the goal of retaining our young college graduates and helping high school students interested in arts-related careers prepare for further education and job training. There's a number of other networking and professional development events and attendance at those is over a thousand. So ta-da.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask, um, I don't know if the timing of this meeting is bad based on what you're, I think we should try and schedule you when you can give us the written report so that we can look at all this stuff that you have to verbally tell us and you can spend the time focusing on some unique things going on and we can just absorb some of these facts, which are all positive, without you having to tell them. So if we need to push the meeting out, you know, farther in the future to allow you to gather your mid-year.
Yeah.
We're okay with that.
Okay.
I think we're confident that things are going well. So I would rather wait another month.
Great.
Than have you rush it.
Okay.
But will we get a copy of this?
Yes, yes, yes. So we got, we received it last, last night and we did.
No, no, that's fine. No, I just do what she's writing.
And there's still numbers that are, that are missing that we don't have yet because it just takes time. I expect to get our state numbers from I Love New York about visitor spending and all that this month. So.
And then when we, relating, I chose, I mean, we didn't know, first of all, this meeting was going to be as full as it was.
Yeah.
But we had selected this meeting way back because she wasn't able to come here and do first quarter.
No problem.
So we didn't want to wait too long.
Until September and like.
Yeah, and September happened.
Well, yes, okay.
But that was, that's the reasoning she put up, she would put on the agenda before we knew it's like.
And then I'm going to, at risk here, I am trying to push things along. But what can you tell us about the hotel in the city of Poughkeepsie? Have, do they, have they announced any like budget for what they're going to do to the place?
Not, not more than what I have heard them here, but, but it will be good.
Is it open?
Yes, it is open. It's, it's still open because they've got weddings, a ton of weddings. They're going to renovate while they're.
And there's still booking rooms coming up.
Yeah, they're open. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
We need more, we need more banquet space, big banquet space. You know, everybody I talked to says, oh, we'll have a hundred and twenty. I'm like, that's not enough.
Well, not to go across the river, but they closed.
We don't want to do that.
No, no, but they closed, what's it, and they're doing.
Anthony and I.
No, I just talked to the guys doing Poker Face. They're like, they made it a casino. You blew your mind walking in there. I mean, that, that place is active.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you for having me and thank you for your support. Please share, please share, 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 be ambassadors.
All right, LDC.
Yes, very quickly, Michael time, it is, uh, these are second quarter LDC numbers I'm presenting. First will be the business attraction program. In second quarter, we received six requests for information. A lot of this is as a kind of a direct result of that we did not have a director of business attraction who was also pursuing outgoing leads. These are all incoming leads. The interesting fact about that is three of the incoming leads that we got, we did not respond to because we did not have property that they were looking for. The trend that we are seeing is for mega properties, which is something that we're challenged with in Duchess County. Those are thousand acres or something. So in terms of the business retention expansion program, we're doing very, very well on that. It's very strong. We have done thirty-four site visits at the end, by the end of second quarter. What is extremely amazing is that we have overshot our business consulting and our referrals to our community partners. Part of that is a result of our exposure during COVID. We, um, our, pre-COVID, typically our clients were industrial and large commercial clients. But during COVID, we helped the smaller retail and smaller businesses. And because of our reputation of that, we're continuing to see more calls in for assistance for those small businesses. So that.
At a future meeting, I would love for you to differentiate what type of help they're needing compared to our normal people.
Yes, yeah.
That'd be awesome.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Um, in terms of our entrepreneurship, uh, again, um, this is that, that small business that we also helped is we hosted a sixty-hour entrepreneurial training program. This is an online program. We had thirteen businesses graduate from that program. We hosted, uh, um, nineteen webinars for small businesses. And then we have an innovation showcase that is scheduled on September fifteenth this year to happen at Rebel Thirty-Two.
Um, have you talked to the folks at New York Crossroads?
Yes.
Okay.
So we spoke to New York Crossroads, we're assisting them. There's not, um, we are, we have offered their support to them. There's not much we can do in terms of partnership until they file for the five oh one three status.
I didn't know that that hadn't happened yet.
But yes, but we've been in conversations with them. In terms of the IDA and LDC, we closed on two projects in June. Those are the Arthur May redevelopment and One Duchess, which has resulted in, which will result in sixteen new jobs to Duchess County and over ninety-nine million dollars of new investment. The LDC, we closed on two bond closing second quarter. It is the Marist refunding and the culinary refunding on that.
Are there more of those coming, you've seen?
We don't see that too much because of interest rates.
Can I get a administrative fee from One Duchess in the two thirty?
I think they.
I mean, you said we closed, so then we should have gotten the administrative fee.
They closed on, um, I think it was June twentieth was the date of the closing.
Okay, so we should have gotten a check of closing for the fee, right?
We did get a check from them. I know that we had to.
I think it is, I think it is in the, it being.
Again, I think why Don is asking, it wasn't in the financials showing, well, maybe it was. Was it application separate?
Oh, it was just the application is separate from the ad.
I'm talking about the administrative.
The administrative was.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it is, but I'd have to go back and just verify the check amount.
For, for the July board meeting, could you provide me a list of the administration that you received here to date?
And I think, and I think what Don is suggesting is I think that we do need to be more diligent about collecting our fees at the time of application.
Well, no, in the closing, I'm sure that the.
We won't close unless they have the administrative fee.
Including council.
I think there was only one time I did have to chase, I think it was Marist something. Said, asked me if I received. But with the, the One Duchess, I, the only reason why I wasn't sure was because I, I was thinking it might have come prior.
Sure.
Like Arthur May, I wasn't, but I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure because I looked, I double-checked and I saw that the administrative fees.
Yeah, but I, I'm just trying to, I can't think of the value, that's what's bothering me.
So, um, so that's that. I will say that what we are missing in this report is the marketing outcomes because of timing. They are, I'll expect a report for that and report on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the open meeting discussion, I think the purpose of that was to state that they had extended it.
Oh, well, so, so the open meeting is that they expanded it slightly to allow for, um, uh, well, the expansion, so, uh, in order to adopt the expanded rules, there are certain procedures that we will need to do as an agency, including holding a public hearing on the expansion. So the discussion is, does the board want to expand the, um, the ability to, for the board to participate and the public to participate via virtually?
It says, under extraordinary circumstances, regardless of a declaration of emergency. Is that what we would be looking for?
Yes, so right now, we are considered under declaration of emergency. So that's why we were able to have hybrid meeting.
Yes.
So it is expected that the declaration of emergency will expire.
Right.
And so then we would have to revert back to what the rules were prior to that, which meant that we had to publish the location of wherever a board member was. This is an expansion of that where we would still require a quorum in person. And then any board member that decided to participate virtually due to these circumstances.
Oh, so it would be based on the individual board members' extraordinary circumstances?
Not the committees. Not the committees. But if a, a board member was to, unable to, based on these extraordinary circumstances, they could participate and as long as quorum was available in this room, they could, physical quorum, they could also be counted with quorum.
Does anybody have any objections to us pursuing that type of wording for future vote?
I was just saying, one thing that we can do is we can put something together. So this memo outlines it and the extraordinary circumstances, they list some examples. If you have anything in particular you'd want to add or that you would think of, but I think the ones that are contemplated pretty much cover it where it's like health issues, childcare. It's not just you're on vacation and are unable to, unable to participate.
On, let's say you're on vacation and there's a special meeting called. Is that extraordinary circumstances?
I mean, that's something that I guess you would want to have contemplated in the policy. So if that's something you want to provide for, it's something that we should probably put in.
People we can work around, but if there's a special meeting, well, actually, we still need a quorum anyways.
This is the issue that I'm thinking is often the issue we find is getting the quorum of who could be here in person. And regardless, that's going to have to be the case. And if you can't get that, you would have to publish the location of the person and make it available to the public. So I don't know if it's something that we would necessarily face too often that you would face as a board. But it does, what this would do is it would provide for the remote participation so someone could vote and.
So are you suggesting that we could approve this now based on this outline?
So we need to hold a public hearing. So what I would, uh, what I could do is I could put together a public hearing resolution for the following meeting. But if there's any further discussion at the next meeting after any more thought about it.
So really, this is not going to change the fact that we need a quorum. It's just going to allow board members to participate in extraordinary circumstances where otherwise they wouldn't.
Right.
Okay.
And where, where it could make a difference is say you had quorum here and one person who was opposed to a project, we have someone, or, I mean, even, even a conflict, they wouldn't necessarily participate. But it would be a project that wouldn't necessarily be approved by the quorum who was here. But there were people who wanted to show their support of it but couldn't attend in person and wanted to vote in favor of it. They could do so remotely, whereas if we didn't adopt a policy and the.
If someone has, just so I understand, if someone has a quorum and is at the meeting but has to recuse themselves, this is.
There's no quorum in person.
Okay.
There would have to be four people present without a conflict.
Right, okay. So do we want a, a resolution preliminarily designed